All right, let's call the, uh, this meeting to order, Board of Supervisors for Warminster Township for Thursday, August 5th. Uh, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our servicemen and, and non-uniformed people working overseas. Thank you. All right, shall we start with announcements?
What do we announce? How about you?
Mister, Mister President, Chairman of the Committee?
Oh, yes, hold on, I have an announcement, yes.
President, that sounds good, it's a nice ring to it.
Yeah. So, uh, we had an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss personnel issues and some other, uh...
Labor, labor.
Labor and other, um, legal issues.
Litigation, right.
Litigation, yes, correct. Okay. Announcements, Kathy, would you like to make an announcement?
I have no announcements this evening, Mister Chair.
Okay, Mister McKee?
Just a few, Mister Chairman, I'll make it brief. This coming Saturday at the V E Club between 10:00 and 4:00 p.m. is the annual car show, which is pretty well attended and, uh, it benefits the V E travel team and I believe they're planning a trip to Germany this year coming and it helps, um, fund that. So it's between 10:00 and 4:00 at the V E Club, please do stop by, um, they have a lot of nice cars, a lot of activities. And I just want to remind everyone that next week is the Nativity of Our Lord Carnival and they've condensed it a little this year, it's only going to be from Wednesday till, um, Saturday. And I believe they've even cut the hours down to eight or nine p.m. So, Wednesday to Saturday next week over at Nativity, please come out and support them, it's, it's always a great carnival. So, that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Judy?
Uh, yeah, don't forget, uh, the next big thing coming up at the, uh, I'm sorry, at the Ben Wilson Community Center is the Arts and Parks Show at the Warminster Park on August 28th, be there. And in September 7th, the, uh, Ben Wilson Center will start to be open regular hours, so you can check out all their festivities on their website, thank you.
Mary?
Good evening, everybody, I have some Parks and Rec announcements, um, some upcoming events, is the Parks and Rec Electronics Recycling Event, which is Sunday, August 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Warminster Community Park, please enter on Bristol and Hattler Roads. Some electronics require payments to be recycled. Community Yard Sale is Saturday, August 21st, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the park, please enter again at Bristol and Hattler Roads. No early birds, vendors will, um, are still welcome and please pre-register, you can contact Parks and Rec at (215) 443-5428. Rubber Ducky Regatta is Sunday, August 29th, at 1:00 at Kemper Park, please purchase tickets online at Parks and Rec office, if it's not sold out, some may be available the day of the event. And Warminster Day will be held Saturday, September 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Warminster Community Park. Warminster Day Committee is seeking for volunteers, sponsors, and vendors for the marketplace, please check out the website at wwwwarminsterdays.org. For our additional announcement, please don't hesitate to go to the, um, Township, uh, Parks, uh, website at wwwwarminster township.org/specialevents. And again, you can always call Parks and Rec at (215) 443-5428, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mary, and I have, uh, one other announcement, um, uh, one of the, uh, people that work here at the Township that we consider a huge asset has decided to move on, um, Catherine McGovern, we want to wish you the best and, uh, you'll be sorely missed and, uh, we mean that as sincerely, so, good luck in your...
Thank you, Ken, thank you, everyone.
We're gonna miss you, Catherine.
Thank you.
I'll have to email you for the Notre Dame updates.
Yes. Don't worry, I'll have it.
Every Friday, we'll, you know, get our rack together.
So, yeah, thanks for all, thanks for years of service and, uh, again, you'll be sorely missed here, thank you.
Wish you the best.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, we do have one presentation, Darren Mayen, um, for another important event coming up, Darren, floor is yours.
Hey, everyone, I don't know how I follow that news, I mean, seriously, you've been really helpful since we started and this is our ninth year, so, thank you, the Township will definitely miss you.
Thank you.
But, uh, thank you all for having me, my name is Darren Mayen, I'm with the Brad Fox Foundation, I just want to give an update on this year's Brad Fox Day, which is also scheduled for September 18th, along with Warminster Day, so, um, September 18th should be a really special day in Warminster in general, I think. So, just want to give a quick recap, it's, it's, uh, run the same as we've run it the past few years, it's staged at Archbishop Wood, so we're partnering with Archbishop Wood, we partner with the Township, the Police Department, Emergency Management, um, to make sure that, that everything is safe for everyone involved. Uh, this year, we'll, we'll also follow the Township and, um, Archbishop Wood as we get closer, if there's any COVID-related concerns, we have to consider any precautions, we'll, we'll work with everyone to make sure that, that they're, um, taken care of. Um, the race will be at 9:00 a.m., uh, we're coordinating with PennDOT, so the road will be closed from 9:00 to 10:00 on that morning, um, and, and we're pretty good about closing it right at 9:00 and getting it open before 10:00 as, as soon as we can. Um, to, to that point, we are notifying residents, uh, three Saturdays ahead of that, that it will be closed for that hour, um, and we go door-to-door to every apartment, to every house, up and down York Road, um, and let every single person know so that they can plan accordingly. Uh, as we've done in the past few years, the money we raise is going to the scholarships, we have a $10,000 scholarship at Tenet, we have a $10,000 scholarship at Archbishop Wood, um, the, the one at Tenet is for graduating senior, the one at Wood is, um, $2,500 a year for the four years that they go to Wood. And so, uh, so there, there are two pretty special things and, um, we're at the point now where we're seeing the fruits of that and the kids that have gotten our scholarships are graduating and, you know, getting jobs and going to the real world and, you know, seeing what the rest of us see every day. Um, so, uh, I, I'm, I'm more than willing to take any questions that you have, um, I do want to thank you, the Township is, every year, uh, you know, everybody's phenomenal, the, the Police Department, um, Joe Veltin with the Emergency Management, the, the board, I mean, you guys are all, um, you've really helped to make it a special day, so I want to make sure that I, um, thank you, and I, I do want to acknowledge that, um, this year, since we did our last event, Brad's father, Tom, passed away, um, and we also lost George Nemec, who was a lifelong Warminster resident as well, um, and, uh, you know, Tom obviously has, has special significance being Brad's father. George helped me write the bylaws, um, he handled the finances, the entire, you know, since, you know, up until he, he passed away and, um, you know, really helped us to structure this in a way that, um, you know, gives us the reputation that we have for, for the work that we're doing. And, uh, George was a retired, um, Lieutenant Colonel in the Army, um, he started the Perlini Soccer Tournament, he coached and repped in Warminster for 20-some years, um, and, and like I said, for nine years, he helped us with our foundation, so, um, George was pretty non-stop and, uh, I'm working with Warminster Township, um, and, and we'll fund it, but we're going to figure out some way to, to pay tribute to George because, um, you know, his, his service to the country, his service to the community is, is really, um, you know, as much as you could ask and so, um, we have some ideas and we'll, we'll come back and talk to him when we have something better, but...
Perhaps we could put some type of monument in the park or something, we could talk about that.
Yeah.
There's a few monuments along Monroe Park, is there is the walkway?
Yeah, uh, the, the direction that, that I was talking to the, the, the Warminster Soccer Club Board, um, and I'm talking way out of turn, so, thank God this isn't being recorded, not on the record or anything, but...
Yes, it is.
Oh, yes, it is.
No cursing, no cursing.
They're, they're, uh, they're building a really nice new field in Warminster Park, um, and so what I, what I propose to them and they're on board and I think probably what we're going to suggest is, um, have a plaque on that field and consider that George Nemec Field, we'll pay for the plaque, um, we'll, we'll, what, probably what we would do is if, if we got buy-in from everyone is, we'll develop the plaque, um, we'll share it with the Township so that you agree on the wording, um, you know, to a certain point, like, I'm not going to go crazy with it, but, you agree on the wording, the Soccer Club agrees on the wording and we all work together, but, the, the foundational funded, so, um, the Township doesn't have to worry about money, so...
Oh, that's great.
But I'll have something more formal that, that I can present to you or, or, you know, email to you and you can take a look at it.
So anybody that's not, I mean, everyone in Warminster should be familiar with this, um, but just, um, to refamiliarize everyone, is there a registration, is there some way to register before the race or do you just show up?
You can go to, you can go to, uh, bradfoxday.com, uh, and there's a link there to register, um, and if you have any questions, you can email OfficerBradFox5K@gmail.com and we can answer any questions. Um, the registration, right now, I think it's 35 for the run, 25 or 30 for the walk, I probably should know the exact price, but, um, but it's, it's a good event, um, nobody, nobody, you know, none of us get paid for it, so all the money goes to, um, the little things like t-shirts and stuff, but then, as much as we can, we donate back and we've donated, um, just about $400,000, so...
That's fantastic.
Is there a discount for the slow walk? Because I usually do the slow, the slow walk.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I'll be right with you.
I know, I know a guy.
Lucky I can run across the street.
How, how sign-ups going, have you, do you have a lot registered so far?
It's, it's, it typically happens that it's slow-going at first and then, in the weeks leading up to it, um, I think it's, I think people have to check their schedules, um, but the weeks leading up to it, the, the registration picks up. We usually, we, we've had, we've had a, a projected growth that we followed for seven years, COVID hit and this year, I mean, it's, it's all a variable, it wouldn't be the worst thing in the world if we don't get 1,000 people, you know, I, I was tracking that we would have been at 1,000 people at, at the ninth year. We're not going to get to 1,000 people this year, but I don't think that's the worst thing in the world.
Right.
You know, if anybody can't make it, they can donate, it's, it's also soccer season at that point, you know, I have two kids in soccer, um, so, it's, it's tough, but, uh, but it's a great event, it's a couple hours, we have the Veteran Expo, um, if you know any veterans organizations that want exposure, we can give them some, some booth space, um, we work with the VFW and, um, the American Legion, um, we'll have an area where veterans can come and we'll give them refreshments and they can just kind of hang out in that area, um, and then we have a couple of other businesses that, that do things for veterans, um, that either sponsor or if they're, if they're a true nonprofit, we'll give them the space for free.
And, um, one other thing I had mentioned, uh, that, that it's really turned into a festive event is the night prior, when you go to pick up your registration and your bibs and everything over at Kenny's Madison Tavern.
Yeah, and then all the raffle baskets are laid out there.
That you can buy tickets, pick up your stuff, and people were in and out all night, it's a real neighborhood thing.
Yeah.
I go every year because it's fun, it's a, it's a real neighborhood night, it's fun.
Well, and there's fear.
Anyway, and there's fear. That's why it's a slow walk, that's why it's a slow walk the next morning.
Seriously, this is being recorded, we have to be honest.
But it's, it's a fun night, it is a real fun night.
But it is, it is, it is, and, um, you know, the fact that this is happening the same day as Warminster Day, um, like I said, I think it's, it's a real shining spot in the calendar, especially in, in what's been a tough year, 18 months for, for everyone.
Yeah, not only is it Warminster Day, but we're going to, um, we want to dedicate the park as well.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, all the renovations should be done by then.
Yeah, I mean, that white fence around the park looks amazing.
Yeah.
That looks great.
Incredible.
Yeah, Karen, Karen and her team, um, yeah, they're, they're unbelievable.
And, and Miko has done a fantastic job.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, the whole, the whole place looks awesome.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's, uh, that's what we like to see.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, if you have any questions, if you, if you know any veteran organizations, um, they can email OfficerBradFox5K@gmail.com, um, and we'd love to work with them and, uh, yeah, definitely come out, we have a lot of stuff for the kids too, so, um, yeah, it's a good event.
Yeah.
And I have some flyers and some brochures I can leave here, if anybody wants any information, it's on there as well.
Right, yeah, and, um, we should probably put this up on our webpage as well, I'm sure it's, it's there already or not?
I think it may already be there, but it's been on, I will make sure.
Yeah, if you need anything, let me know. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, so there are no land use matters, public hearings or ordinances tonight, so we will go right to public comment. Come on up.
Yeah, I want, I want to ask you about...
Well, first, your name and address, please.
I'm Harry Van Houten, 993 Gorson Drive, and I want to ask about the water, I keep saying that the water's unsafe on the computer, I called the water department and I couldn't even get through to them, but, I keep hearing it's unsafe on the computer.
Um, well, you ever hear that, did you ever see that commercial where, you know, where the French guy, or the girl dated a French guy and says "Bonjour", like that?
No, I, no, I...
Now, the waters, you never saw that, yeah, well, don't believe everything you see on the web.
No, I, I know that, I understand that, but still, it's, you know, shocking.
Well, this is a question for the municipal authority, but the water is safe.
The water is safe.
Absolutely.
And there is a public meeting that the water authority is holding on the 19th of August at William Tenet High School.
Well...
It has to do with storm water, but, I'm sure they'll take any of your questions about quality of water and, I would, I would be there.
Yeah, but I would be rest assured that the water's safe, it's tested, it's tested continuously.
Okay, and I live on, on Gorson Drive and underneath Gorson Drive, the water flows from the, uh, I don't know, the rain, it's some kind of creek or something.
Right.
Well, it gets clogged up and I called them a couple days ago and it hasn't been cleaned out yet, there were three guys there with three trucks, but they didn't clean it out.
So Gorson Drive, we'll, we'll let somebody know.
All right, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up.
My name is Joanne Van Houten and I live at 993 Gorson Drive, that was my husband, and what he's referring to about the wa, safety of the water is that there are going to be, uh, studies that I believe, I, I don't know what organization is doing it, but about cancer and the, uh, individuals that ha, the, the number of cases of cancer that have arisen in the Warminster area because of the, they're saying, the PFOS whatever, uh, so, I mean, you can't believe everything, but that kind of a thing, you have to like not disregard, basically.
We're not dis, well, first of all, you're in the wrong forum here, this is the Township?
I'll make sure we go to the other one.
Yeah, I would go to the municipal authority, and by the way, that, that public announcement, um, that, that's not confirmed yet about the meeting, even though it was put out there, that was something...
There's a letter out with the MUA logo on it.
I know, I know, Mark.
Someone else put that out, the, the authority did not?
Well, the authority put it out, but the Board didn't know about it, so...
Well, that's a problem.
Yeah, exactly.
Not the first time.
So, uh, anyway, but it may happen anyway, but...
August the 19th.
But that's, yeah, that's, that's the municipal authority.
Right.
And there's, um, they test that water for the PFOS compounds all the time and it's at non-detect, which is like three parts per trillion or less, so, um, actually, it's below three parts per trillion, so, there's, that water's absolutely, that does not contain that chemical in it, the water that you're drinking.
Now.
Now, that's correct.
However, my concern also with the water is that it leaves a yellow residue in my tub area.
That would be iron content.
So, what does that mean? I don't even know what that means.
That means it's just dissolved iron and it's, and it's in all the groundwater around here, so, but this is, again, this is another issue for the municipal authority.
The water, okay, yeah, because that's a pain in the neck and we even...
I'm sure, yeah.
We have a faucet in the, uh, kitchen and the plumber said, oh, and it's a really good faucet, grow, and it's not, it's supposed to like last forever, and it's rusting underneath, and he said, oh, that's because of your water, that's what he said.
Is that what your plumber said?
Water's hard.
Don't believe anything your plumber says either.
Well, like, who does one believe nowadays? You?
Yeah, believe me.
Um, well, I would, I would take that up with the municipal authority, but, uh, you know, water, iron content in water should not rust your faucets.
Okay, but it does leave this yellow...
But it does leave a residue if it sits, yeah.
Which is a pain in the neck, really.
Well, if you look at the back of tonight's agenda, the municipal authority meets on Monday, August 9th, at 5:30 p.m.
There you go.
Mary was just gonna...
The building right next door.
She was just gonna say that.
Next door.
We'll be there.
All right, look forward to it, because usually no one shows up.
We'll be there, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, yeah, and I'm sure that, uh, they'll be able to answer all your questions, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? All right, so being done, we'll move on, the consent agenda, uh, if you don't mind, I'll read them off.
Yes, oh.
Okay, consider approval of the Board of Supervisors minutes dated July 22nd, 2021, uh, consider 1270 Mearns Road, release number 10 from the escrow account in the amount Consider 625 Mary Street, release number 3 from the escrow account in the amount of Consider authorization to execute an employee separation agreement. Consider authorization of the Township manager to execute the, uh, W T E O, Local 2289, uh, memorandum of understanding to extend the collective bargaining agreement. And lastly, consider authorization of the Township manager to execute the AFSME, Local 1598, memorandum of understanding to extend the collective bargaining agreement. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any comments from the Board? Comments from the public? Okay, being done, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Uh, financial report, uh, Mary?
So I have a supplemental bill list dated July 30th, 2021, in the amount of $2,392,932.66 for a total of $2,392,932.66.
Is there, is there a motion to approve the supplemental bill list?
Motion.
Your second?
Second.
Any questions or comments from the Board? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, call the question, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries 5-0. Uh, do we have a June financial statement?
We do.
Okay. Steve?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, good news to report, real estate taxes were way ahead of, uh, the collection last year and the collection last year was at a good pace as well, so we're even doing better, uh, than last year with the real estate tax collection, thank you to our tax collector. Act 511 taxes, the same, we're trending higher this year than we were last year, um, and that's the good news as well. Uh, Act 511 taxes include, uh, real estate transfer tax, earned income tax, mercantile tax, local services tax, amusement and business privilege tax, so, um, in particular, our real estate transfer tax, we collected another eight, 80,843 in the month of June, so that's all good news, so we're trending good. Um, from the expense standpoint, we're tracking, uh, um, at or below last year, year-to-date, um, so that is good news, a couple of expenses, um, are higher than what the budget, but not by a material amount, we'll look to do a budget amendment before the end of the year. Um, the Police Department is up on a couple of items, but they got a grant to offset it, so, uh, one-for-one there, revenue versus expense, so we'll be good, um, with that, so, um...
Thanks, Steve.
That's basically it.
Okay, so we're, we're, we're still doing what we, uh, set out to do, which is, uh, control costs, which is very good, glad to hear it. All right, uh, no unfinished business, there's no new business, and we'll go right to professionals' reports, uh, Steve, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman, um, at the last, uh, meeting that the Board had, which was on July 22nd, um, we had representatives from Mascaro here, um, they had agreed to send a letter to all of the residents within the Township, uh, alerting them of, uh, service issues that they have been having and also to announce their contingency plan so that we could make known to all the residents within the Township what they will do if they miss a collection. Keep your trash out, they'll collect it the next day, that's their goal, they are, uh, on, back on track, we do acknowledge that they had some difficulty, as they had mentioned at the last meeting, but we did hear from them, uh, this week that they are back on track, they, they were one day behind earlier this week, but we believe by Friday, they'll be back with everything, including yard waste, so, good news to report, look in your mail for that announcement coming up, and we have posted it on our website as well. Um, Planning Commission met on July 27th, at your last Board meeting, here, we had a number of residents that had some concerns, those residents did come to the Planning Commission meeting and voiced their concerns there, they primarily were related to storm water and encroachments on a buffer area that was proposed in that land development, the land development is for 45 homes that are over in the cemetery, so, that was a sketch plan review, we would look for them to revise and make a new plan, to come forward to the Board, not likely in September, but shortly thereafter.
So I understand that they're willing, that, that they're actually, uh, scheduling some meetings with the residents over there as well?
They are, thank you, Mister Chairman, that's a very good point, uh, we were encouraged that the, that the developer had agreed to meet with the individual property owners, um, and walk their properties to address their concerns. Um, I don't want to characterize it as addressed, but to understand their concerns in the hopes that they could be addressed during the land development process.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anything else?
Yes, uh, the, the Planning Commission also approved an 89,882 square foot addition to Double H Plastics, um, they, uh, recommended preliminary final, the applicant will have to make some changes to the plan, so we wouldn't look for that to come back until those changes are done.
Okay.
We won't see them for a few months then?
Few months.
Yeah, I think, I think so, Mark, I think you're right. Um, the zoning hearing Board also met, uh, on the 28th, there were three applications, they were residential, all three residential applications for setbacks, um, uh, mostly, um, they were all approved. Uh, Shannon, Shenandoah Woods, uh, we're looking and, we're hoping, uh, and planning as best we can for the buildings to come down October or November, uh, of course, that's a very complicated process, requires a lot of work, uh, Jeff's, Jeff DeWark's, uh, team at the RDA is doing a great job with that, uh, and the Police Department is helping out as well, uh, from a security standpoint.
Yeah, can I, can I ask you a question or not? I've noticed there's been a car parked in there, is that, is it, they keeping security there?
Yes.
Some parked car parked in the, within the locked area?
Yes.
Oh, it's good. I've noticed a few times, there's a car parked in there.
I noticed that too.
Yes, that, um, uh, the cost per hour for that service to be there 24/7 and they're there 24/7, um, we thought very well spent, we have a, an area that is hard to, to, to maintain, um, uh, but anyone who has any designs on going through that fence again, please note, um, not a good idea, Police Department, it will, will, will help us with that active, and if you do trespass, there's a good chance that, uh, if you're caught, you're going to be arrested, so, um, Chief, did I say that right or did I say that?
Unlike, unlike when the, when the, uh, Department of Defense owned it?
Yeah, right.
Right. When they had, uh, when they had their, uh, security out there, people were still just wandering through.
Karen's, Karen's team is doing a good job of main, the, the fence gets, it's a huge fence, long, uh, uh, I don't know how many feet it is, but of course, it goes around that whole property, um, it does, um, require constant repair and her team does that, so...
Looking forward to when it gets, all the buildings are knocked, demolished, removed and, uh, becomes...
Yep.
Part of the park.
Uh, we have one...
All overdue.
Steve, may I ask, when does remediation actually start?
Uh, probably not till October.
Till about October, okay.
And I would think October through November, that's pending no, uh, complications.
Right, okay, thanks.
So, uh, Chick-fil-A, uh, we have, uh, the Planning Commission will be meeting on August 10th, there's only one application on, that's for Chick-fil-A and that's for, uh, canopy over the drive-throughs, two canopies over the drive-throughs. Did I get that right?
That's correct, it's an amended final land review, thank you.
Okay. Gosh, I don't want to be the guy that makes this meeting go long, so...
Go through the business as necessary.
I also wanted to make mention that Gilmore's Group is doing a great job with the road paving. We are, I think if we're not done, we are almost done. And it really did go well. So I wanted to make mention of that.
And Craig mentioned at the last meeting in September, we should see some type of schedule for ADA corners?
Yep.
That he's putting together, so...
They're going to evaluate which ones need to get done.
Have a schedule.
And once again, we're not required to do them all at once. So it's another unfunded mandate, as, you know, as we all know. So we'll do them, and we'll methodically work through them all.
If I may just add on to that, Craig's team has come up with a good plan with that utilizing Andrew McCabe as well. Andrew used to work for him in doing those inspections, and his plan, I believe, will save us some actual money, real money, dollars, in doing, preparing for those curb ramps. So we'll be working with them as we go forward.
They're not, they're not inexpensive. They're very expensive. They're like $7,000 per ramp. So anything we can do to save some money would be very beneficial to all the residents.
That's all I have.
Okay. Solicitor, Mr. Flagler?
If nothing further at this point, other than our report, anyone's any questions, we're happy to answer.
Okay, and Craig's not here?
He's not. Those, the items that I mentioned about the Planning Commission would be typically, you know, announced by Craig. He did submit a report as well, and it's in your packet if you have any questions. But I know that he would have wanted us to mention about the road program.
Yeah, and the road program went very well. I'm very pleased with how that went.
I may add, Mary and I checked out a couple of the roads, Gibson, particularly because we had neighbors that, but you know, too, Steve, that had called, because part of the road was done, they had to come back because of some material they needed, what have you. And the people were very, very happy, and it looks great. And then on Valley Road, we were talking to the workers, they did a really good job. They're doing a really good job.
They did a phenomenal job.
So I just want to give them kudos to them. Thank you.
I will pass that along.
Yes.
Yes, I mean, I live right off of Valley Road, and the residents are extremely pleased. I mean, it's actually too smooth. Scary smooth, yes.
Winter time didn't shoot the star yet, so hopefully...
No, I just mean the speeding. It's 25 miles an hour. I don't want people taking off.
Well, that's always an issue. All right, how about we move on to the Township Manager announcements of upcoming agenda items?
In September, as mentioned a little earlier when we were talking about the financial report, we'll look to do a budget amendment and more in-depth analysis of where we're at year-to-date. That will help kick off our budget process for the next year as well. We also will look for hopefully getting some memorandum, memorandums of understanding with the Wormminster Authority on the shared cost for road paving and sharing of equipment, working with the Solicitor's Office on those now. So that's upcoming for the September meeting so far. Doesn't look like there's going to be a whole lot of land development on there, but that's to be determined yet.
Okay.
So are we canceling the second meeting?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Good question.
No objection.
No.
I'm all for it.
Without any objection, we have canceled.
I'm all for canceling.
That's the second meeting of August, so we'll, our next meeting will be September 2nd.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Thank you, Steve. All right, let's move on to the second public comment. Anyone? Okay, being done, thank you. Thanks for showing up. And by the way, thanks to residents. I want to thank the residents for, it's been a phenomenal two years. For the last two years, the residents have really come through and paid their taxes on time, made our job a little easier here, especially on the financial end, so we could plan and budget. So thanks to all the residents for being very cooperative in that. It's much appreciated. So we'll go to Supervisors' comments. Again, I'd just like to thank Catherine again for all her service, and the best of luck. We all, we all wish you the best.
Thank you.
And I'll go to Kathy?
I'd like to say I'm going to miss Catherine a whole lot, too. Thank you so much for everything, and we wish you the very best. Also, just want to say, very good meeting tonight, and I wish everybody a happy, safe summer. Please get vaccinated, everybody. I got my shot. That's it. Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few things. One, September, we go back to formal attire?
Yeah, I think, yes.
Okay, that's one I want to scratch off.